Moving that KLG Amendment to Trail Project, there is a delay on that one, so we're going to remove it. And then, under 5B of the reports, we're going to add a report on the Fortieth Street update. And that would be all my changes.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the changes? Now I'd look for a motion to approve the order of business as amended.
So moved.
A motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor approving the order as amended, order of business amended, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Consent agenda, commissioners, is there anything on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, the only corrections I have to make would be on the joint commission meeting. You got it? Okay. I do not have any corrections.
Okay.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Now we'll vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We do have some timetable items tonight, starting at 5:00, but we'll get right into the non-timetable. First item up is proclamation. And I'll be handling the proclamation. It is the Extra Mile Day proclamation, which celebrates Extra Mile Day 2018. Whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with a total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Dickinson, North Dakota, acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 575 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2018. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President, the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2018, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take the time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitments, to make their organizations, family, community, country, or world a better place, in witness whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause this seal to be affixed. And I would look for a motion on this proclamation. Move to approve? I have a motion to approve the proclamation to celebrate Extra Miles Day 2018.
Second.
With a second. All in favor approving the motion? State aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will celebrate Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2018, in the city of Dickinson. Pass this to City Administrator. Thank you. We'll move on to our next non-timetable item, which is the Downtown Task Force request. And Commissioners Frederick and Mrs. Trustum, Commissioners Trustum, will be handling this.
Mr. President, the reason this is on the agenda today is due to some conversations that have been had in the downtown Dickinson Task Force. This collection of leaders in the community have been working for quite some time on developing the project and kind of seeing through the RFP process that was conducted with JLG. One of the things that, I don't know how we want to phrase this, but after seeing some of the costs affiliated with Site A, there has been some discussion on looking further at the potential in Site B. Now Commissioner Oltmans was the previous commissioner that served on that task force with myself, and Commissioner Frederick has now joined in his place. And we both kind of came into the last meeting being filled in due to not being able to make some of the prior meetings due to conflicts. And one of the things that we pointed out was we have not had a formal presentation to the city commission, which means we have not been able to engage and discuss our thoughts on the project outside of the public hearings that have been held. So that was one thing, we wanted to make sure that we could start the conversation. And we need to discuss if we, as a commission, feel that we need to do our due diligence in looking at Site B due to acquisition of land costs that are potential for Site A.
Okay.
And we do have Downtown Dickinson Director Jennifer Strange, and I believe we have representatives from JLG as well to answer questions. I think now we need to give them some direction if we want to wait to hear what the landowners come back with in terms of building costs, or if we want to move forward with at least getting a cost analysis for Site B.
Ms. Frederick, anything to add?
No, I think she covered it. You know, we heard some preliminary numbers, and I think this commission needs to hear those preliminary numbers. So I think that's part of the reason we need to figure out a time to have a presentation to us, so we know where we're at. And we were making some, in those numbers, we're making some assumptions on the acquisition costs of that land, which we don't know are accurate or not, so.
Well, we may have to even hold off on this until we find out what the actual price is, but I'm glad you brought this up as conversation. In talking with some members of the Downtown Task Force, my concern was that we had never been given a price on what the acquired land is going to be. And I guess that will affect the, you know, the square if the land's too expensive. So Ms. Walla, Mr. Steiner, any comments?
So the property that we would need to acquire, those landlords have been notified that we're interested in.
We are currently waiting to hear back from them to...
But we've notified them that we're interested in them.
We did send a letter.
We haven't heard back from them.
Yes.
Was there a time-specific end date on that, to hear back from them?
August.
Walt? I'll go to Walt. He sent the letters out.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. They were given three weeks to respond, and that letter was sent out last Friday. So within this next three-week timeframe, we should get some responses back, and we'll know what their expectations are for prices.
I would suggest that before we spend $8,000 on Site B, that we let them come back at our next meeting in August, use that as our deadline. If they don't come back with anything that we've acceptable, then we look into your Site B. I think you don't want to put a job in. But I think the site that everybody would like is the preliminary of Site A.
And ideally, you're right, Commissioner Steiner, I mean, it is a great location for the desire of the project. But in the long run, we just have to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And I agree, I mean, if they come back with numbers that are fair and that we can justify to taxpayers, then I think that's great. But I think it's important, too, for us to, as a commission, to note that there is a potential for a second site if those numbers aren't what we are looking for.
I guess I wouldn't mind having JLG just come up and explain some of their costs and their timing if we would, you know, go to that. If you guys don't mind. There was some unworded.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Zach Mather with JLG Architects. Jennifer Strange with the DDA is also handing out our kind of final deliverable for this phase that we went through recently, which was the conceptual design for Site A. So she'll hand that out. And what I'm going to hand out is a presentation which we gave on 419 of 2018 to the Downtown Task Force, in which we identified some pros and cons for Site A and Site B. So just to start off quickly, in the analysis that we did of Site A and Site B, this was something that came up kind of as we were working on Site A. Some of these questions of, well, what if the land costs a lot of money, or is this really the right place? It was, we were directed to study the two sites again a little bit. And just so you're aware, Site B was also studied in the original master planning of the Town Square project prior to JLG's involvement, I believe, starting as early as 2011 and then concluding in 2015. So there was some vetting of the sites prior, and Site A was chosen, but then we also did some additional vetting of the sites. And if you go to kind of after the maps, there's a kind of description of the pros and cons that JLG came up with. And I won't go through these, but I just will point out that the cost of acquiring property was listed as a con potentially of Site A and a pro of Site B. But we did not necessarily evaluate the exact dollar number because there was not at that time, and I don't think there is at this time, an agreed-upon value for those properties. So we listed it as a pro and con, but we did not necessarily identify it as a line item of cost. So this document was assessing the two sites more on concepts that we consider aspects of a successful urban plaza. Those are aspects of design, connectivity, context, weighted greater than cost. So if cost is the analysis tool, we did not use that method.
So there was, basically, when you came up with Site A design, there was no cap put on it? You weren't told that we have X amount of dollars to spend? It just, you were just told, these are the features we would like?
That's correct. We did come up with a budget estimate for Site A, which was five to seven million dollars. And that, obviously, that's a wide range, but that's considering unknowns of property acquisition and things like that.
Basically, you guys were, I mean, they took everything from the public hearings that people wanted and gave us the whole ball of wax, basically. Now, I mean, it can be scaled back, obviously.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
The wish list.
It was the wish list, yeah.
You know, I thought it was just really important that we start discussing this on a commission standpoint, because we haven't had any open discussions. And thank you for coming today. You've done a lot of work on this project and have done a terrific job, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to decide how to move forward with this project, so it's important to start having these discussions now.
Well, I think we needed to have this a while ago, and I said that when I met with some of the task force members, that I was very surprised that we did not have a price already from those properties. I thought that would be figured in, but we don't.
How many property owners are there?
I think there's just two, if I'm correct.
Two. That's correct.
Are those property owners here, or are they prepared to give us a statement?
There's one here. I don't know if, I don't know if Mr. Marsh is willing to, but I do think that is what we need to find out. We need to find out what this is ultimately going to cost. Five to seven million dollars is a pretty big swing, you know, especially if it's closer to seven, because that basically puts five million on the city, because the downtown's only raising two.
Right. And that upper-priced tag will be hard to justify for this project.
My question, I guess for the JLG, in, as of performing what we have in front of us right now, if we wait until we get these totals back, you guys can still, there's no weather affecting or anything like that. We can, you guys don't need to go back on the site. You basically have seen the site as needed, right? You just have to do some new renderings, I understand.
In terms of if we were to move forward with our proposal for Site B?
Correct. Right.
The question is, just to restate it again?
Well, I'm just saying, if right now, we have this in front of us to approve a scope of work for the alternative site.
Right.
If we delay that until the end of August, basically, to see what the price is of these properties, this price is going to change.
There's no negative effect to delaying it? No?
No, I'm fine with delaying this until we find out what they want. And then I would really like a presentation from the Downtown Task Force, laying out, basically, what the costs are going to be once we find out. And then we can move forward from there, because I know there has been a lot of discussion on how we're going to proceed with buying properties and such, and that's something that we'll have to work out on an MOU once we have a total, so.
I feel comfortable waiting for the next meeting, see what Mr. Marsh comes back with, if he wants the fees, interested in selling or not, and...
All right. Here, we have Mr. Marsh, and then I think Mrs. Decker with Special Agent, so.
Mr. President, members of the commission, I just wanted to just let you know that the, I wanted to quickly check the date, and the property owners were given until August 24th, which is actually after the next commission meeting. So it would be September 4th that you would know, if they didn't respond sooner.
No, and that's fine.
I know a couple of years ago, I talked with Mr. Marsh about that property, and, you know, just, I don't think we were joking, but we were talking about some naming rights and so on, in lieu of the property, and so on. I don't know if Mr. Marsh is still interested, something like that, but we would sure entertain at Mr. Marsh.
What I think, what I'm hearing is, we'll table this until we find out what they want, and then we'll go forward after that. But I would like a presentation if the downtown can get on the agenda early September.
Do you want the task force, or Jennifer Strange, or the...
I think Ms. Strange, so. Give us, and JLG, give us a cost. Put together something so that the public can see what it's going to cost, once we got numbers.
Right, so we'll take our estimate that we prepared.
Right, the one that you prepared already.
For Site A, combine that with the property costs, and that would be...
You should have a total, right?
Right.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions for, anything more, commissioners, that you want to add? Satisfied with?
Absolutely. I think the conversation just needed to be addressed on the commission level, so.
Agreed.
We can move forward on this. So I'd look for a motion to table the...
So moved, Mr. President.
I'll second.
We have a motion to table a scope of work on the Dickinson Downtown Square, Site B, with a second. Any further discussion or questions?
Now we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. This item is tabled. We have some reports, 3C, preliminary budget statement. Deputy City Administrator Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. I wanted to bring up, it's not anything that has to be approved or anything, but because in 2017, the North Dakota legislators made a significant change to budget deadlines and notice of requirements for all local governments, we now have to file a preliminary budget with the county office by August 10th. And I wanted to bring to you some of the, preliminary budget is what we will do for our property tax. And I wanted to let you know that we will be filing for $5,724,000, which is 45.73 mils total. Our mils also include the library and the airport. And this is, the approved taxable value that is used from the June Board of Equalization is lower than what it was in 2017. So we are asking a dollar value, and then the county figures out what the mils will be for that. The library and airport are asking, we will put them at the amount that they can, the maximum amount that they can have, which is four mils each. That leaves the city with 37.73 mils. But with that, I wanted you to know that we, as a city, will not be raising any of our mils for that. We still say it at net zero dollar value on that. So that's my report on that part, and then I have a second part, which is, according to this new North Dakota legislature with the changes of budgets, we have to also, when we report our preliminary tax amount for property tax levies, we also have to state on there is when we will hold our budget hearing dates. So the calendars that I handed you, I would like you to look at the month of September and October. And according to North Dakota League of Cities and North Dakota Law, we cannot have the first, cannot hold the first budget hearing until September 7th. Our calendar for our commission is September 4th. I would like to propose if we could move the first hearing on the 11th of September, the public hearing on September 25th, and then with that, I would also like to move the October dates to the 9th and 23rd, and we would have our final and second reading of the budget on the 9th, which is in compliance with the legislative, where the last date has to be October 10th, which has to be into the county. The reason I am asking for both months is because then if we would entertain the 11th and 25th, but keep the 2nd and the 16th, you're having a back-to-back commission meeting, and because there are five Tuesdays in the month of October, if we move those, we'd have a week in between like we normally do, and then November would go in fluently and end the year correctly. That would be my suggestion, is to, asking for approval of changing the months of September and October to the 11th and 25th in September, and in October to the 9th and the 23rd.
Mr. President, I will be gone August 21st, which is our next city commission meeting due to a conference. So if anyone else is going to be gone for the next meeting, we could potentially look at moving that one to the 28th, because it would fall within the range.
So you're looking at moving the August 1 and 2?
If anyone else is going to be gone.
Oh, okay.
I guess we move that one to the 28th, that would be after the 24th deadline for the last thing we just talked about.
Right.
Yeah. But that would be okay, because you'll have your statements in by that time?
Otherwise, the 24th to the 11th is a long, is three weeks, you know, it'd be a longer time.
Yep.
I'm not opposed, I guess.
I'm fine.
Mr. Steiner?
I'm okay.
Ms. Walla?
They all work for you for, and are we entertaining the 28th then, also in August, or are we leaving the 21st alone?
Well, the 28th would be beyond that deadline of the 20th. The property owners having to report.
I'd say we move it, August, the 2nd August meeting to the 28th.
Then we would have that report, yeah.
Then we'd have that report ready to go.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is August, commission date would be the 28th?
Getting somebody from the audience saying they can do the 28th.
Not going to be able to?
And I guess...
I would be fine with the 11th, if they reported on the 11th, too, so.
But we would still have those numbers.
Yeah, we'd have the numbers.
So we could, if anything, we could talk about the potential for Site B if we had to, on the 28th.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Great.
So we're looking at a change to August 28th, September 11th, September 25th, and then moving October to the 9th and the 23rd to meet those deadlines for the budget.
Yeah.
Are we going to, next year, let's look at that right away, and then we'll work it in?
Yes. We will look at that because of the new deadlines, everything that we need to have in.
Any objection, commissioners? Ms. Murtha, we need a motion to change?
Okay.
Okay. I'd look for a motion to change commission meeting dates.
So moved.
Motion. Motion to change the next five meeting dates with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes aye. Motion to change the next five commission dates is approved. Mrs. Carlson, that's all you had for reports, right?
Yes.
Or move on to public safety? We only have a couple minutes here. We'll let you get your first one in there. Chief Seabock?
Thank you, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. That may be all the time I need, actually. Shoot, if I can get it to come up. There we go. We want to use this evening to recognize a couple of donations that we've received lately. Marathon Oil Corporation, Marathon Oil Company, $10,000. The American Wildlife, the American Foundation for Wildlife, $5,000. We applied for that with the help of management of the South Side Saloon. Those funds are going to be used to purchase a fire training prop for our training site. It's a computer-operated digital prop that will allow us, it's connected to a smoke generator. It will allow us to do trainings that simulate a live-fire training. The only thing missing from this environment will be the heat of the actual fire. These screens are designed to take the hit of a large-caliber hose stream, and it's going to be quite a unique and valuable training aid for us. In addition, we want to recognize, maybe, we'd like to recognize other donations we've received this year. There we go. Maybe we'll just let the control happen from the back room. In 2018, we've received donations from Truist, ConocoPhillips, Marathon Corporation, a Citizens donation, the Badlands Board of Realtors, and Rough Rider Electric, for a total of $34,216.75 in grants and donations received so far this year that are helping us continue our operation service to the community. That does not include a state homeland security grant for $10,063.50 that we'll receive this fall to help us maintain equipment used... fall to help us maintain equipment used for regional response. Next slide, please. That works much better. Just to quickly mention events that happened so far this year. We did the Sunset Senior Center breakfast, the Pancake Breakfast, over Rough Rider Days, June 30th. After all expenses were paid, the Fire Department membership returned a check for $1,232.95 to the senior center. After expenses, we always return all proceeds to them. Battle of the Badges, August 7th through the 9th, that's taking place right now. In addition, tonight, we will also have national, Fire Department is present for National Night Out, which is Police Department's host of program, of course, for this evening. And tomorrow night, the lip sync contest that was supposed to happen between the police and the Fire Department, I can tell you, I can predict, will be won by the Police Department because the Fire Department's bowed out. We may challenge them to an obstacle course, however, we're just not singers, more of a physical thing, so. Muscular dystrophy association on Thursday. The Fire Department has been partners with muscular dystrophy since 1954, and we will be at several different locations. You'll see fire trucks and firefighters at Prairie Hills Mall, at Walmart, and firefighters work in the crowd at First on First to raise money for muscular dystrophy. And Commissioners and Mayor, that concludes my report for the evening. I'll be leaving right after this to join the crew at National Night Out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, first timetable, item tonight is landscape ordinance. City Attorney Murtha?
Me this evening to present the revised or updated ordinance is Forester Quam. If you'd join us at the podium, he's prepared a lovely presentation for you and brings his very vast knowledge of forestry and experience to you this evening and to the table. As he sat down, after, just a brief recap for the Commissioners, this ordinance had originally gone through some revisions at the planning and zoning level. It came to the city commission level. There was discussion during the first reading of it. There was also a public hearing at that time. It was tabled for some further revisions. Since that time, we've had the opportunity to consult with Forester Quam, and he's provided his insight on some particular items. We've also sat down with our building official and received some inputs from, I'm trying to think of the other departments, but there were, there were quite a few.
Walter.
Walter, Planning Department, of course. And so I just.
Leonard.
Walter, Leonard. It was a very big group. There's a lot of time that's been put into this, and a lot of background information for you. So the purpose of the presentation is to provide you with some background as to the policies behind the landscaping ordinance and what, some considerations for you as you think about the revisions. As we go through, I know Rita has passed out to you an updated version. What you're not, what you're seeing right now with this revision is changes from the existing ordinance. You're not seeing changes from the changes that were proposed last time, because that would have been quite a few changes. And what I will do, however, is highlight for you, as we go through each section, what the, how the updates today differ from the updates previously. So you have the opportunity tonight to, as it's a second reading, to approve it, or if you'd like, you can have another reading of this ordinance, given that there have been, you know, additional changes that should be discussed before the commission. So I just wanted to give you the options. And the reason why we set it on for another public hearing is because it had been such a, there had been quite a bit of time between its last reading and today, so just giving other individuals an opportunity to come in and comment. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Forester Quam.
Good evening. It's good to be here for you guys, ladies and gentlemen, and we'll just go through. And basically, we were in, through our meeting, we felt that there's just, just to bring up some of the values of trees and how that works together with our urban forestry program and some of their practices. I'm not sure how to work this thing. Is it just like this? Pepper. Okay. Oh, okay. Just the definition of urban forestry is that there's, it's kind of threefold. There's, it's the, basically, the care and management of single trees, as well as tree populations within the urban settings for the purpose of improving the urban environment. It also advocates the role of trees in a critical part of the urban infrastructure. And then also, the urban foresters plant and maintain trees, support an appropriate, appropriate tree and forestry conservation practices, and conduct research and promote the benefits of trees provided. Kate, next one. According, just to talk about some of the major benefits of trees and why they're so important to the urban environment is just summer cooling. And we can experience, we can understand that, especially this time of the year. The coolest place to stand under, in this weather is underneath a tree. And National Arbor Day Foundation reports that savings in energy costs have been documented as high as 58% during the daytime hours on air, of air conditioning costs. And a common one is more closer to 10% with properly placed trees around the home. And how this works is that the tree basically intercepts the sun, the twigs, the branches, the leaves, and, and the heat's waves are reflected off from the tree. The tree also, the twigs, the branches, the leaves absorb heat, and they actually use that as energy within the part of, the parts of the tree. It also triggers photosynthesis. Processes of, the process of transpiration is very similar to perspiration in our, in the human body, is that the tree actually releases or opens up its stomates on its leaves to release water vapor to reduce heat conditioning in, within the, its tissues and, and similar to our bodies. And this also cools the air, because it releases the ox, or the water vapor into the atmosphere and then cools the, with the cooling effect of the shade of the tree. Shrubs and foundation landscapes in the landscape play a big role also during, by deflecting the sun's heat away from the lower parts of the building, foundations of the buildings, and lower parts of the house. The shading of an outdoor air conditioning alone has achieved around a 10% savings. So just putting a tree on your outdoor air conditioner can actually help reduce some of the energy costs that, that uses. Then we look also to the winter, and these are tried and true practices and principles that were, have been done to the Great Plains for years through just basically our windbreak principles. Evergreen trees planted on northwest sides of the home will push the prevailing winds up and over the home, reducing some of the drag on the house as far as, and pulling off excess heat. And so there is a protected area in that leeward zone of that, of those plantings. During the Great Plains studies, there have been shown commonly that to have 10 to 17% on the average, depending, no matter what type of fuel you're using, whether it's wood, coal, oil, or electricity. And some cases, it just depends upon the structure, how well it's built, where it's located, and other factors, you can get up to 40%. And then just the windshield factor affects around the homes outside during the wintertime are a big factor, especially during, in work areas. Can go to the next one? Then aesthetics and beauty are another big benefit to the trees. A lot of people sometimes say, well, the trees look pretty, but they're not functional, but they are. Trees soften hard man-made environments, such as concrete and asphalt structures. They also, you know, I might just mention also that they actually prevent, shading actually does lengthen the life of things like asphalt and those, and concrete. Trees and landscapes provide fragrant smells, colors through the flowers, natural shades of greens, fruits for tasting and touch, so they're sensory. Wildlife also is usually there, wherever you find a tree on the prairie, there is wildlife associated. And they can be, whether they're songbirds, squirrels, pheasants, or other birds and animals for food, they use it for food, shelter, and habitat. Consumers also prefer more landscaped. In a study in Washington State, they actually found people trusted more, better-looking, more landscaped shopping malls than they did ones that were older and dilapidated and that just because of safety concerns, there was more concern because people took care of their place, they felt safer shopping there. And they contribute to property value. When you've got a home that is energy efficient, beautiful surroundings, trees as well are valuable, depending upon the species that you're using, whether it's a bur oak or Siberian elms, I mean, the difference, the value is so much difference just because of the quality of the tree. And then also whether they are maintained or not. I mean, if a dead tree is dead, half-dead, that property value isn't going to be as attractive as it could be with a fully healthy-looking green tree. Landscaping also affects the value, and this is a number that's been given, bandied around by Realtors and from anywhere from 10% to 20%, more commonly around the 10% to 15% Now, the city permit, planting permit, as we were talking, you know, in our meeting, really can be, play a big role in, in the landscape ordinance, because as city forester, the planting permit becomes very helpful because it, first of all, we can determine whether there's enough growing space for a tree to be even, you know, to be placed out there on the boulevard. And we only put that permit out for the boulevards. And then the thing is, is we also, through the permit system, we can control how far from fire hydrants, driveways, utility boxes, water shut-offs, traffic signs, intersection and driveway clearances. And thirdly, designated, oh, go back to that one. Okay, and then the designate species, ensure that the tree species or cultivar is winter hardy, performs well in soils, expected lifespan, under boulevard conditions, will, how will it perform. And then we have to look at branch structure, so that we know that this is going to be a strong branch structure down the long haul of the life of the tree and its durability through storms and other, just interaction with humans type of durability. This is, you know, I mean, the thing is, is when we get people that, you know, you usually get a lot of people that want to plant maples, they love maples. But overall, in our high pH soils, maples just don't do good, whether they're here or where I came from, Jamestown. And the thing is, is, but there are certain maples and certain cultivated varieties that will perform well and that should be promoted over some of the more experimental. Okay, next one? And then there's approved list of trees. And this is, again, this is going back to some of the same principles that were discussed before, but we're looking at durable, time-tested tree species and cultivars for western North Dakota, for our conditions, something that's going to be here 30 to 40 years later. Homeowner's choice of tree, not on the list, may be something that can be submitted or, you know, at least concerned, considered by the city forester, may be considered in a experimental or for research purposes, just to see how it will, does well, because we probably don't have enough data on it. Property owner can also notify, they do the notification of the utilities of the planting site by calling 811. And on the permit also, if you look in your package, you will find a, example of the planting permit, and on the back is information on how to properly plant the trees and/or to observe anybody that is doing the planting, so that you know that you're getting a tree that's going to survive and not one that's, you're going to have to perpetually replace from time to time because somebody didn't plant it right. Final inspection is then determined or by the city forester as far as, you know, that it was done right. With that, I guess the, just to point out from the handouts, I did include a fact sheet from the National Arbor Day Foundation on just some of those energy conservation principles of trees, whether they're planted in, just for shade as a single shade tree or a windbreak type planting. You know, in a yard, you're limited by space, but the thing is, is evergreens can make up a big difference. Then they included a copy of the planting permit, also the tree selection guide. This is one that Walter was generously able to provide for me. This one was done before, and I think we'll probably be doing some revisions on that and making that as available also in a package to new homeowners. Then on the last is, just includes an article that just happened to be real timely, came out on July, I think it was 30th or 31st, and it was on just the property values and the effects of planting a tree and, you know, as far as a value to your home. With that, I'll entertain any questions or?
Okay.
If you'd like me to jump into the revisions or?
Was the permit already in, on the books? Are we approving a permit?
So the.
I'm just wondering why that was the presentation, according to this ordinance. Why was?
So the change, specifically to your question about the change about the permit is under the revisions to 3908003. And I, and I want to step back and say, the, every section, there is a theme of deregulation, so there is less regulation. The permitting only applies to plantings in the public right-of-way. So if you want to meet any of the ordinance requirements by planning in the public right-of-way, it will need to be from the list or as otherwise approved by the city forester, so that the city can maintain its interest in making sure that the right-of-way has clear visibility, there are accidents, you're not planting something right in front of a stop sign, that type of thing. But if I, I can really quickly go through the.
The permit was already on the books. That was something that existed, we're just getting an update.
No, no, the, the permit would be, the permit would be new, but just for the public right-of-way. So that.
Well, we've, we've had a permit, or you've had a permit from time to time.
There's been a permit in the books.
In the books? Okay.
Yes, there has been a permit that has been used prior.
Mr. President, if I remember the hang-up on this was the number of trees required in a residential lot and where they could put them. None of this other stuff was really what we were tabled for.
No, and I don't see any change to that.
Well, can I, if I could, there have been a, if I could really quickly run through them. On the first one, B and C, the revisions were, had already been removed. There was a concern in the prior one about tying it to, that had been approved by the planning and zoning, tying it to a final search and check of occupancy. That was removed, so that had been there, that's now been removed, so it's not going to be a condition. And then amending A to just indicating that. And then amending A to just indicating that it's an exception unless you want to voluntarily do some landscaping, so if you're going to voluntarily do some landscaping, the city is asking that you do the landscaping in a manner that's consistent with the code. The approval of the city forester, again, changing it, you'll see more references to city forester because we have one now. And again, this was for the right-of-way landscaping. Under A, the official list of plant materials, I believe there was a concern that was expressed at the last time this was heard about telling people what they can plant, like me having that, and so what, the modification that's been made here is, is the freedom of the property owner to plant whatever they would like on their property, and that the only limitation is, but if you're going to plant it in the public right-of-way, that's where the official list comes into play. So that was, again, a step backwards as far as regulation is concerned.
So 3908002 basically says, it used to say that we didn't require this if they remodeled or added on, but now we are going to require it if they remodel or add on?
No, we're not, no, it, this is an exception.
It's a provision, this section shall apply to all new development on each undeveloped lot of, for building, or additionally, except for the following.
Yeah.
Oh, except.
Yeah. Only if there was a casualty or loss, but, and it wouldn't apply unless you want to do some landscaping after a loss? So there's no requirement that you do the landscaping?
I don't know, somebody from building is here, but I know in the past, we've, if somebody wanted to build a garage, then we've made them come up to the landscaping requirement on their, on their property, or if somebody's added on.
That was under B, under, the first one, under B, the remodeling, so the A only applies if there was a loss. B was the remodeling rehabilitation, but B had previously been taken out at the, at the last, at the last reading.
So if I add on to my house, do I have to comply with this if it's a 20-year-old house? Is my question?
No, but if you're, if a tragedy occurred and a tornado came through and ripped up, ripped up your garage, so to speak, and you were doing reconstruction and you decided that while you were doing this reconstruction because of that impact, the casualty or loss, and you wanted to do some landscaping, we're asking that you would do it consistent with the ordinance.
Okay. And if I could add, it would also require you, if you're going to plant in the right-of-way, to go through the permitting process and go through Vern and obtain approval to put the correct tree in the right-of-way. I think that's the intent of what you see there, is if you're just going to repair the garage, you'd obviously get a building permit and plant the trees in your yard, you wouldn't go through this process, it only would apply in the public right-of-way.
But in the past, we had to have one in the front yard on an interior lot and two in the side yard on a corner lot.
No, so in the, well, in the past, you had, the current ordinance requires a lot more trees.
Right, but that was the change that was made. But as long, you know, after his, just little thing we just saw, the whole thing we've always talked about, why does it matter as long as they plant a tree if they put it in the backyard, on the side yard, in the front yard? I understand the permit process if they put it in the boulevard or in our right-of-way, but why, why does it matter where they put it? If a homeowner wants that tree in his backyard, why can't he put it in the backyard instead of the front?
I, I have no control of that other than?
Well, that's, that's been the hang-up on this thing from day one.
If I could just address that, Commissioner, the, it's called infrastructure on that, that list for a reason. It's no different than sewer, water, roads, streetlights, it is a part of the city's infrastructure, that's how it's viewed as an urban forest. And so when those trees are planted in the urban forest, in the urban corridor, in the public-owned right-of-way, then the maintenance and care and protection of those is no different than public works, the sewer and water systems, the, the streetlights and whatnot, that's, that's why.
But, but we're not requiring them to plant them there.
No, but if they choose to, then it becomes part of?
I totally understand that, I'm just saying, if a homeowner is required to put one tree in on his new house, why does it matter where it's, if it's outside the right-of-way, why does it matter on that lot where it goes? Why does it have to be in the front or the side?
I don't have an argument for that, I just, I, I think the, the issue is, from a city standpoint, I would continually promote that we plant them if we can in the public right-of-way. And if they're okay with that, if they're not, then yes, they could plant them, as far as I'm concerned, wherever they want on their lot, it just doesn't meet the, the criteria or the intent of what an urban forest is for the city, because there's no, there's no guarantee that that, that improvement will stay there. You may plant 20 trees in your yard, I might buy your house next year and cut them all down. In the urban forest or in the publicly owned portion of that, we would be maintaining and, and keeping that resource, Vern would be following up, that people weren't just removing those resources at the, at the drop of a hat. So that, that's really the, that's where we have a problem here in that this is promoting urban forestry, which is in the public right-of-way. Planting trees in your yard helps our community, it does soften the community, yes, it's a, it's definitely a benefit, but there's no guarantee that they will stay there.
But, but we're not requiring them to put them in the right-of-way?
No, no, on your direction, we're giving them the option of putting them either in the right-of-way or on their private property.
But if I read 39.00, 08.007 correctly, it says a minimum of one tree in the front yard.
Which could be put in the right-of-way to meet that requirement.
But again, we're requiring a tree in the front yard, which is the whole holdup from the get?
That was my, that was where my question, why does it matter where that tree goes? Why does it have to say front yard? In, why do we require one tree? I mean, this is the whole, this is the hang-up that we've had every time we brought this thing up.
Would you, so then, for this specific question, would you like it to be changed to say one tree in the yard and then not differentiate corner lots? So that there is not, there's not a three-tree requirement for corner lots? Because then they may also have a?
I think there's some comments here that nobody wanted to require any trees, but I'm, I'm okay with this, it just, why does it matter where we put them? Front yard, side yard? You want two, two trees in a corner lot, does it matter if both those trees are in the back? I don't have an issue with the, the amount. I've just, why do you tell them where they have to put them if it's not in the right-of-way?
So is that, so that would be my question, is that the specific direction of the commission at this time is just to have a, is it one tree per yard? And if it's, and I would offer that if it is one tree per yard and they can plant it in the back, then there isn't a really a, a need for more trees in a corner lot?
What did Jamestown require on a new construction? Did they have a tree requirement?
Yep.
Do you not remember what it was?
Well, they, they put it in after I left, 2013, so. I'd have to go back and check to see how that was. We looked at it, I guess.
I would think 99% of the people want a tree in their yard.
Exactly.
But there's 1% that might not want them.
Well, and I was going to bring that up, the 1%, and I mentioned this prior, you know, the 1% that may not want a tree, and I'd like to, I would like to see some exemptions, a couple exemptions, one for handicap, if a handicap individual wants to build a new home, that they don't need to require, that we don't need to require them to have one or two trees or whatever it is, basically, basically because it may be hard for them to take care of. Second one is the elderly. If people are living longer, they're staying in their homes longer, and a lot of them are building new homes that have level entry and so on, they may not want one or two trees where they got to clean up every, every fall and so on. A storm comes in, they may not, I mean, they may not be able to take care of that property. So I would like to see some type of exemption for the elderly and the handicap. But I think Mr. Frederick is right, as it is, 99% of people are going to plant trees. And whether it's in the front boulevard or in the backyard or wherever, it doesn't matter to me, I don't, I don't, why would we want to require them on the boulevard and so on?
What I, what I just fail to see, or is not happening, is we've made it quite clear that we do not want to require a tree in the front yard. That has been said multiple times in multiple meetings. Why it has not happened and why we keep discussing this is getting to the point of frustration.
And I think, Mr. President, just to respond to that, that I know that, in particular, you have voiced that, however, I don't know that there was direction in the form of a consensus, so, and it was brought back. So if there is, so my understanding, if there's a consensus, we can make that change and bring it back for a, another reading of, and again, is it, and this would be my specific question for direction, one tree in the yard irregardless of the corner lot, or is there a different standard for a corner lot?
Mr. President, we have talked about this, not as much as planning and zoning has. I understand Mr. Hadley's point of urban forestry and promoting the look and the feel of the community with the trees in the front yard. I am supportive of that and the ordinance as is. I understand that you guys are, Commissioner Frederick and yourself have been working on this quite a bit on planning and have some different thoughts, but from my perspective, I do support the ordinance as is and the, I like the inclusion of the one in the front yard, but they can choose where that's placed. I support the vision of urban forestry. I think if it's in the backyard, you're really not creating that community look that we're trying to achieve, the tree-city look.
Any other thoughts, commissioners? Well, I've, I've made it quite clear that I believe that we should have trees, I just don't believe we should have a requirement where you plant them. I don't think I can be any more clear about that. But if someone would like, well, well, first, thank you, Mr. Quam.
Okay.
This is a public hearing. And then the second reading, and this ordinance is, what is our next ordinance? Is it 1658?
I believe so, yes.
What's?
No.
Or this one already has a?
It already has a number, 1651. 1651.
1651? Okay, ordinance 1651, I will open up the public hearing. If anyone has any comments on ordinance 1651, please come forward, state your name for the commission, and cite your concerns or comments on 1651. So you know one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments on 1651? I know Mr. Steiner has said he would like some exemptions in 1651. Mr. Frederick and myself have expressed that we'd like that people do plant trees, but they are allowed to plant them where they want. Mrs. Trustum has said we're, she's agreeing with this. Ms. Walla, any comments?
I guess I would agree with you and Commissioner Frederick, that as long as you're planting trees on your property, you should be able to transplant them where you want.
And I think that's just where Mr. Steiner is too, he just likes some exemptions. So I think we?
If I may, Mr. President, I would like to provide you with a finished product. It does not need to be changed. And in order to do so, I may, I just have clarification with regards to, we can modify the language to one tree anywhere in the yard, and I, am I removing the language with regards to the side yard? Is there any different number?
Frederick, on the side yard? Ms. Walla? Or, Mr. Trustum?
Minimum one tree on the lot is fine with me.
Okay.
So I guess, unless someone else has an objection, the minimum one tree, and you'd strike the two trees on the side yard or corner? And can we approve that as is tonight with that stricken, or do you need to bring this back to us?
Because of the, if you're going to consider exemption language.
Commissioners, Mr. Steiner's request for exemptions, any opposition to that?
I'm fine with that.
I have no issue with that either.
My only clarification is, what are we going to, what's the determination for elderly?
Well, we'll let them come up with that.
And I would offer, I would, what I would probably do is not include the specific reference, but have, have a mechanism by which somebody who has a concern can come forward regardless of the basis of the concern and be able to, yeah.
Okay, I think that would work. So then you want us to table this and bring us a product or back for the next meeting?
Yes, and it can be for the, it'll be a third reading for?
A third reading, ordinance 1651. So I'd look for a motion to table 1651.
President Decker?
Yes.
Before you do that, just one question, you said one tree on the lot or one tree, does that include the boulevard or not? I guess if there's, somebody says they want to plant a tree, but they want to plant it on a, on a boulevard, is that going to satisfy?
If they, if they want to plant it on the boulevard, then they go through the permitting process.
But will that include the, the language? You know, you said lot, I mean, I want to make sure.
Well, I mean, that would qualify.
Okay, that's all, I just had that question, sorry.
That would qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Like Mr. Frederick said, 99% of people are going to plant multiple trees. And it just, there is a requirement, like Mr. Steiner said, there might be some people that, they don't want anything in their front yard, they don't want to sweep leaves in the spring, or they might just want to put some small trees in the backyard that the leaves never fall off, they're ponderosa pines or something, whatever. I just think that it's people's property, they should be allowed to plant their trees or wherever they want. I, I agree that trees make the city look beautiful, but at the same time, it's personal property and you should?
I just want to make sure it was included in the boulevard, not just personal property.
Okay, so we're looking for, any other questions from staff? Okay, I'd look for a motion to table ordinance 1651.
The move?
Second.
I have a motion to table 1651 with a second, all in favor of tabling ordinance 1651, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Order 1651 is table till next meeting. All right, next up is Southwest Water Update, we have, this is Mary Massid.
Good evening. I have quite the slideshow presentation for you. However, I love technology, when it works, it works, and when it doesn't, it doesn't. So I think we're just going to wing it, if that's okay? Unless all-knowing engineer can help me out? Just my luck, right? Okay, good evening, thank you. I'm Mary Massid, I'm the manager/CEO for Southwest Water Authority here in Dickinson, throughout southwest North Dakota. So I am just going to tell you about the project. I understand that you had handouts a while back, so I won't exactly reference them, I guess. So Southwest Pipeline Project, we are not done, and it just makes sense. It leads to quality water, provides us with quality of life, economic vitality, future growth and quality of place. Southwest Water Authority, our mission is quality water for southwest North Dakota, and our vision is people and business succeeding with quality water. We have an organizational chart, we may catch up here. The project was, is a state-owned project, it's, the North Dakota State Legislature has, the project is in century code, it's state-owned, construction and project owner is the State Water Commission, or administered by the State Water Commission, which is chaired by the governor, the A Commissioner sits on that commission as well as seven appointed members. The Southwest Water Authority is the management, operations and maintenance arm of the project on behalf of the people of the state of North Dakota. So Southwest Water Authority was born in the legislature in 1991. We are, the project, the commission, excuse me, the commission transferred management, operations and maintenance of it to the authority January 1st, 1996. January 1st, 1996. And then in April of 2000, the city of Dickinson transferred management, operations, and maintenance of the project, of the water treatment plant here in Dickinson to the authority as well. So we took over that facility and have been running it on behalf of the city ever since. We are governed by, and we provide some of the best tasting, best quality drinking water in the world. We have won twice as fourth-best drinking water in the, in the world, actually. So that's quite a feat for all of us here in southwest North Dakota. We're governed by a 15-member board. Our board are publicly-elected officials. They're elected in the June primary of every, every two years. They serve four-year terms. Half our board is up for reelection every two years. We have pictures up of our board members. We, they represent the 12 counties in southwest North Dakota, as well as two from the city of Dickinson and one from the city of Mandan. Larry Bars is here, and he is chairman of the board, and Jason Benz is here, and he is representing the city. The city of Dickinson appointed him to fulfill a term that was expired or untimely terminated by the loss of Larry Sting. So he will serve out Larry's term, and actually, the city of Dickinson, if you're a resident and you vote, you're voting for three members of our, of our board of directors, our governing body as well as yours. And they do a fine job. They're representing the people of the state very well and our region. Next, we have a map of the Southwest Pipeline Project. We, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the area we cover, approximately a quarter of the state. It's the 12 counties in southwest North Dakota, as well as we serve Perkins Counties in South Dakota and a corner in McKenzie County. So it's basically everything south and west of the river except McKenzie and Sioux Counties. We currently serve 33 communities. Those are highlighted. Our intakes on Renner Bay, we have a treatment plant north of Zapp. Everything in green is treated by the, by the treatment plant north of Zapp, and everything in blue is treated by the treatment plants in Dickinson. Our project funding, if we could go back one more, there is our funding to date since the project's conception, since 1981, I'm going to say. We have spent about $378 million on the Southwest Pipeline Project. Funding sources are the Resources Trust Fund, which is 20% of the oil extraction tax, Water Development Trust Fund, which is the tobacco settlement dollars. Federal funding is state, or is garrison diversion, MR&amp;I funding, as well as USDA rural development in the form of loan and grants. NRCS has also provided funding for our project. Then the next slide gives you a timeline, and we can look at that, and you can see where those funds have come in and the, the type of projects that we've looked at over the years. We started in 1971 to get water to southwest North Dakota as garrison, with West River diversion. That lost, we've been trying, the region tried ever since and came up with the SAA study, followed by the Southwest Pipeline Project. As far as organizations go, we've had West River diversion, we've had West River Joint Board, and finally, Southwest Water Authority. Then we have our rate structure, and that is, this, next, this shows the history of the project dating back to 1971 through the current year, and the funding sources to date each year that they were presented or paid. Then we have our contract rates, '92 to 2004. You can see our water rates are composed of, for contract customers, which would be the city of Dickinson or any other city, or contract customer, we serve its O&amp;M, operations and maintenance, treatment, replacement, and extraordinary maintenance, capital repayment, or as we refer to it as return on investment, as well as a reserve fund that was started in 1999. Our rate started at 228 and went up to, on this slide, you can see they went up to 296, 298, and 2002. That was, we were building our reserves up to four months, and at that point, we had met that reserve early. So instead of continuing to raise rates, we kept them stable and ate into that reserve to get it down to the four months. Following that, you have the rates from 2005 through 2018, and our current water rate is at 443 per thousand. And we have a graph following that shows the total rate with each of the rate components. Next would be the replacement fund. This is under statute for both the authority and the Southwest Pipeline Project, as well as their transfer agreement. That is for replacement and extraordinary maintenance of project works. They need approval by both State Water Commission and the Southwest Water Authority Board of Directors in order to take funds out of there. The, started at 30 cents per thousand gallons. We write a check each and every month. That rate is set with the authority and with the State Water Commission. It's currently at 70 cents per thousand, and we have about $18.2 million in that fund. Next, I talk about return on investment or capital repayment. Since project started, or since we started serving the city of Dickinson, which was October 17th, 1991, that year, the city of Dickinson was paid, and we paid to the state about $11,000. Now we're paying back more than $12,000 per day, or $5 million per year. In fact, we're a line item budget, line item, budget item for the State Water Commission as a revenue stream for water supply, water projects throughout the state of North Dakota. The next graph shows you that by year, you can see how we have grown and are in, paying in excess of $60 million, and actually at 60.2 through the end of July. Our, so, our rates are made up of O&amp;M, return on investment or capital repayment, and the replacement fund. Then in addition to that, besides rates, we are a taxing authority, and we do tax at one mil. That's approximately $650,000 revenue stream to the authority for a general fund, which covers board of directors, engineering, sign-up easement, legal fees, et cetera. As I said, that's about $650,000, and our general fund budget is about $1.5 million annually. That mil levy was set to sunset in, it's been extended three times, in 2001, '09, and currently at sunsets in 2020. We are looking at extending that in this upcoming session, and if it does not get extended, the rates will increase by 30 cents a thousand, which is something that we are also looking at due to increased costs and reduced water sales throughout our region. So we've been under construction for 33 years. We serve about 56,000 people. We have over 7,100 rural customers. We serve about one quarter of the geographic area of southwest, of North Dakota, using three water treatment plants and more than 5,000 miles of pipeline. Our water sales are projected at 2.5 billion gallons for this year with a revenue of 15 million. This past year, we were completed the Oliver Mercer North Dunn Regional Service Area, and here's a celebration on the Farmstead and our turn, water turn-on event. So some of those communities that finally reached have been given water service, as well as rural customers, some of whom have signed up in excess of 20 years ago. So this map shows you, well, the green map shows you our project works, the intake on Renner Bay, all our pipelines, pump stations, other project facilities. We always build our project with extra capacity in mind for future use and future growth, but most of that growth has been used up. And the next slide shows you all the subsequent customers that have come onto our system since construction has been completed. So those are customers who come on, pay the cost of construction, and hook up, and use up the additional capacity in the system. So I have a couple of slides I'd like to share with you as far as the growth, and currently, I guess, we could say that we have more than 500 customers, potential customers, locations on waiting lists throughout our region of people wanting water where we cannot serve them due to hydraulic limitations of our project. As well as, now we're also dealing with growth of our communities, such as Dickinson, and what we need to do, this shows you the peak days of water treatment, water production out of the treatment plant in Dickinson with the population growth. Then the red line shows the water treatment plant capacity, which is 12 million gallons per day, the main transmission capacity at 14 million, and the intake capacity at about nine and a half million, and that's for what the areas served out of the treatment plant in Dickinson. So we are limited for future growth. So with the projections and with the construction that we are doing for the project, our capital improvements will meet the needs for now and in the future. And that includes construction of the treatment plant here in Dickinson, which increases capacity from 12 million to 18 million gallons per day, or 18 MGD, as we refer to it. It will also increase our main transmission facilities with our current construction, as well as the intake capacity and getting water to Dickinson. So our current construction includes a supplemental water intake up at Renner Bay, a water treatment plant here in Dickinson, that's six MGD. We have two raw water, reservoirs under construction, one east of Dickinson, one north of Richardson at the pump station. We also have our, under construction with our first leg of parallel pipeline from Lake Secocawea to OMND site. And we are now constructing a residuals handling facility here in Dickinson to handle the lime by-product. We use lime as a softening agent for our project. So the next slide goes back to that map that we showed before, and then we'll have pop-up our intake. On Renner Bay, we share an intake with Basin Electric Power. Our southwest treatment plant, which is fairly operational, we're working on project closeout with that. We also have our second raw water reservoir east of Dickinson, north of Richardson, we have one, our parallel pipeline, and we'll see what else I've forgotten that's going to pop up here, a residuals handling facility. So our next map shows those facilities, as well as what else is needed in, to treat what, to, what project works are needed to increase capacity for treatment for the 18 MGD here in Dickinson to serve southwest North Dakota. Then I have some photos for you, which include the intake, second intake. We have our, that's the caisson. It's 24 and a half feet in diameter, 151 feet deep. It's under construction. We have our second raw water reservoir east of Dickinson. That's a dome tank. It's got 30-inch walls. Quarter of the floor took 90 truckloads of concrete, so they were pouring it a quarter at a time. It's, the dome is up, and if, construction is nearing completion on that site. We also then have Richardson Reservoir. We have a couple of photos of that. We have our center elevated tank, and showing the construction and raising. That's a composite tank, million gallon elevated tank, as well as the treatment plant in Dickinson. So there's center. There's our treatment plant, looking west. There's looking to the south. Here's membranes. We're using new technology for ultrafiltration, as well as lime softening. That's the residuals handling facility. That is just to the southeast of the new treatment plant, north of the river. And I believe we have another photo. We were able to host the Bureau of Reclamation, the Department of Interior, and State Water Commission earlier, and that's how that looked, and now they put the precast walls up, so we have a building. They'll be bringing in the presses for the lime later on this month. Then we have pictures of our raw water line that is being installed, and that's 30-inch welded steel, mortar-lined, wrapped, and cathodically protected. We'll be doing that at various locations from Lake Secocawea into Dickinson, where the capacity is needed, velocities are too high. We are also going to be bidding this month upgrades for the Dodge and Richardson pump stations to increase their capacity. So as I said, we are not done. It makes sense. Our future growth of our region, our community, are, are waiting for more quality water. So thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. We appreciate your support and would answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Ms. Massid?
I actually had a question--
Staff, yes.
If I may?
Sure.
I was just, earlier in the slides, when you were talking about the repayment to the bank of North Dakota, are you, in, in the amount you were making, paying every day, are you paying more than what is required under the terms of the loan, or is the terms--
No, we are not a loan. We're a state-owned project. So in place of, and that's a misconception throughout the state, I would say, is it's state, it's a state-owned project, so it's state funding, federal funding, as well as some loans. So our obligation is in our transfer agreement with the state, and the capital repayment or return on investment, and we pay that back to the State Water Commission every month. It is tied to the CPI. It's indexed annually. That rate is set by the State Water Commission.
So you're not, if I, you forgive my terminology, under the repayment terms, whatever they may be, are you repaying it back in accordance with the terms, or even more than what the terms require?
We are paying it back in accordance with the terms. But when they were looking at rates and what we could afford out here, they said it would take lifetimes, several lifetimes, to pay back the cost of this project. And if you looked at, so, we could say that, and we are doing well with paying back more than 60 million to date.
And there's going to be an increase in the rates?
Correct. That's indexed to the CPI. I'm thinking that that'll be a few cents per thousand. We used to absorb that within the authority. We're unable to do that any longer. And water sales, quite frankly, are down. For example, last month's water sales compared to a year ago for the city of Dickinson's down almost 38 million gallons, just for one month. So that's some of the things we're facing. We're cutting back on employees. We are not spending where we don't need to or can avoid, so.
And the increase in users on the, those individuals on the waiting list, will they serve to help reduce the impact or not?
As we can add them, yes, they will, with additional water use.
So I think those are my questions. I just had been speaking with Mr. Zurov about the approximate amount of the rate increase, and I know that there had been different numbers, but you have a final, you have a final number?
We do not yet, at this time. Sandy, Sandy Burwick is my CFO. She's here. We're currently looking at. It could be as much as 30 cents, but we'll see, per thousand gallons. But really, for some of the best drinking water in the world, and everybody here has bottled water, you have a bargain.
Well, we've never increased more than 17 cents?
I think 25.
Is that correct?
I'd have to go back since I, I think it's 17.
You flew through your slides pretty quick, especially the 2005 through to now.
We do have some handouts of the rates, and I believe that you were all given, we sent copies of our annual operating report, so you do have those, and our rate history, the terms of the rates, that is all included--
So the state--
--in the annual report.
The state dictates what you're, what you owe them?
As far as the capital repayment portion, yes. It's part of an agreement. Our board approves rates, the state, and they approve, and the State Water Commission sets certain portions of the rate, which includes that return on investment.
So the state tells you what to set our water rate at?
A portion of it, yes.
And how do they make their determination, just on what--
There is a formula, and it is also in the city of Dickinson's contract, as well as everyone else's. It was set at 44 cents in 1981, '71, whatever the date was, and it's indexed annually to the-- the CPI for September 1st. So when September 1st rolls around, that'll be our final, well, probably October, mid-October, when we get that final number. Currently, that portion is about 3 cents.
Commissioners, staff, any other questions?
Well, thank you for your patience.
Mr. President, Ms. Massid, it used to be roughly that Dickinson was, was taking half of the volume of your production out of the Dickinson plant. Does that still roughly hold true?
I would say so.
Approximately, yeah.
Yes. However, now we have, yes.
Ms. Massid, some of your, you had 2.5 billion sold last year, and last year, I think the city bought close to a billion, I think, so it'd be a little less than half.
Yep.
Perfect.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up is the ATV ordinance. We have a public hearing. City Attorney Murtha will be handling this.
I will. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Before we jump into the ordinance revision, I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge Jordan Gross. He has been our legal intern this summer, he will be returning to UND Law School. He's been very helpful in researching and assisting with updates to ordinances. So even though he is, his last day will be this Friday, you will see in the ATV ordinances, one of his efforts, that he put a substantial amount of time in. He also contributed to the mobile home licensing ordinance, and after his departure, you will still see some of his work product come before you. So I just wanted to thank him, and he's just done a wonderful job for us this, this summer, and assisted on getting a lot of ordinance updates moving along in the, in the beginning stages. And tonight, he gets to see your comments and the efforts of his, his, his summer efforts, I should say, with regards to this. So the, this ordinance, what, the reason it's been brought to you is issues were brought to our attention from both municipal court and the police department that involved, there are some sections of the code where the penalty is less than what is required under state law. And in 2008, in a case, it was Sabi, I believe, v. City, yeah, Sabi v. City of Fargo, the North Dakota Supreme Court came and ruled that even if you're a home rule, a home rule charged city, you cannot institute a penalty that is a criminal traffic violation that is less than what the state requires you to. And so in reviewing, or I should say less than, different than, it's got to be what the state says with regards to these types of penalties. So in this particular instance, it does involve, in some cases, raising the penalty, in other cases, bringing it down. The open, section one is the open bottle law. The penalty here was listed at $100 in state law, it is 50, so that modification was made in section one. Section two involves the ATV ordinance that has been adopted, and for the most part, really mirrors state law. However, going down, there were some slight discrepancies, both with regards to trespassing in particular, and in the penalty section, where most of the changes occurred. There is some, and I want to bring, raise this to your attention, because there is some room for movement here. There are some things that are included in the city ordinance, which are not part of state law. And in those particular items, you are free to charge whatever you would like to charge. So for example, the addition of C and reduction of 40 to 20 is to be compliant with state law, bringing, bringing the amount of the fee down. However, the sections E5, E6, and E13 mirror offenses in state law, and in state law, these offenses were a class, are a Class B misdemeanor. However, under ordinance, it was again, something much less, just a penalty. So that was modified to incorporate the Class B misdemeanor reference. And then again, at the bottom, which essentially applies to equipment violations, the city had it at 20, it needs to be reduced to 10, again, to mirror, mirror state law. However, I want to bring to your attention that under, excuse me, E, the long numbered section, under the ATV ordinance, under subsection E, if you scroll to the bottom, there are some things that are not in, not in state law. So for example, driving in ATV while carrying a loaded firearm, that is not, does not have a penalty under the state code. So as it's written right now, because it was lumped together with, with other ones, this would be a $20 penalty. However, you are free to make that 40, bring that back up to 40, or higher if you wish. So if you, just let me know if you would like to do that, we can, we can make those modifications. And upon the second reading of the ordinance, bringing also back a modification to the fee schedule.
So if, if, if you're driving an ATV, or UTV, or whatever case, off-road vehicle, and you're carrying concealed carry, is that a violation according to our ordinance?
According to our ordinance, it is. And that's according to our current ordinance. The only difference would be, and you're, so because it is also not required by state code, you can also repeal it if that is your desire to do so.
Well, I personally would like to see that struck, but, I mean, there's probably plenty of people with concealed carries that are driving UTVs and ATVs around, or even taking them out. Because according to our ordinance, you are allowed to drive, say, a snowmobile or a UTV directly out of the city limits. And in that case, it could be, say you were exiting the city limits, take one of these off-road vehicles out, and you're going hunting, and if you have in possession of a firearm, you're, you're violating our ordinance.
Loaded.
Yeah. But if you're, like I said, if you're concealed carry, if you're concealed carrying, you're not carrying loaded, what are you carrying it for? You gonna throw it at somebody?
I don't have any problem striking that one. I think that was dope.
I would be okay with restricting that entire line 14.
Okay. Anyone else, commissioners? Nope. I would say we strike 14.
Will do.
Is there any other penalty that Mrs. Murtha mentioned that you want to increase the penalty for, or just leave as, as is?
I think it's just cleaner if we leave it.
Leave as is?
Yeah.
So will you, we need table this, and you'll bring it back to us, or?
I believe you can move to approve.
As amended?
As amended, and then we'll bring you back for a second reading.
Okay, and the, well, this, any, any other comments, commissioners? Not, this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. And this, now this one would be 1658. So ordinance 1658, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone has any comments on the open bottle law penalty, or the amendments to the operation of off-highway vehicles? Anyone? 1658. No one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments? Staff, any comments on 1658?
Mr. President, I would just like to thank Jordan for all his, his work he's done for the city of Dickinson. We, it's great to have some fresh perspective and some assistance for Attorney Murtha, so thank you for your work on this and your work for the city.
Yes, thank you very much. You worked hard this summer, so. Not much of a summer off, but getting some good experience, so. All right, I'd look for a motion on 1658.
I would move to approve with the recommended amendments. Second.
We have a motion to approve with the amendment in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing non-mole vote, Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. First reading of ordinance 1658 passes. Next up, waiting diligently in the background, is the public hearing for sales tax, and we have Attorney Kreip. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. President, commissioners. We do have a brief slideshow to go through some of the issues with the public safety sales tax. So. What's that? Oh, okay, perfect. So I want to just go over briefly what we're going to talk about tonight. So the first is just a recap and some basic information on what the current tax system is and how things are allocated. The next is the process for implementing this new sales tax. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the proposal that we're making regarding that public safety sales tax. And then we'll talk about the public safety needs and why the tax is being requested, what the effect on the citizens will be, and then how the tax will be administered. So this whole thing came about because as part of the commission's goals, one of them was to create a funding source other than the general fund for public safety. The public safety taxes the general fund pretty heavily. As you'll see later, it's about 41% of the general fund goes to public safety. And so we needed to look at another way to fund that, so that we have funds in the city for other options, debt reduction, property tax relief, items like that. So the sales tax committee met to confirm the interagency cooperation between the police and fire departments. We discussed the police and fire department needs, and we discussed ways to fund these improved services that we can offer. And then we did see some projections from Deputy Administrator Carlson regarding possible proceeds from the new tax. All said and done, we have identified the costs associated with the needs of those departments, and we've developed an expenditure plan to address those things. So one is the amount of the proposed sales tax, the cost versus the expected proceeds, and then how the tax will be administered. Right now, the current sales tax for the city of Dickinson is at 6.5%. So 5% of that goes to the state of North Dakota, and then the remaining 1.5% is distributed back to the city. So by comparison, looking at some of the budget considerations we have here, the preliminary 2019 budgets that have been presented or discussed at the city level, the police department is looking at $5,676,594. The fire department is looking at $2,32,415. So the total budgets of the public safety departments in the city are 7 million, you know, roughly 7.7 million. Both of those are funded through general fund dollars, and the total amount of general fund dollars available is 19, just, just under 19 million. So public safety does account for 41% of, of the general fund, based on the preliminary So what we're proposing is implementing another half-cent sales tax that would go to a vote of the citizens of Dickinson on the November ballot. I've presented you with a copy of the petition that was circulated, and more than the required number were certified by the city auditor's office. So we have qualified under the city code to have that petition considered for the November ballot. What would happen is, the sales tax proceeds can only be allocated by the city commission to public safety purposes. So instead of taking that 7.7 million dollars out of the general fund, you'd have some amount from the sales tax to offset that and free up some general fund dollars. 60% of the tax proceeds, based on the way the, the ordinance was drafted for the petition, will go to replace funding that's currently drawn from the general fund and distributed to the police and fire departments as part of their annual budgets. Okay, so that's money that they're guaranteed to have then, that won't have to come from the general fund. And again, this does leave more money to offset other needs, such as property tax relief or debt payments. The half-cent sales tax will be collected only in the, within the city limits of Dickinson and the incorporated area. It would increase our current tax from 6.5% to 7%. Based on the projections from our city, Deputy City Administrator Carlson, it looks to generate about 1.3 million in 2019 and 2.63 million in 2020. And that jump is because for 2019, we're only going to have a partial year of collections. So we're not assuming that the economy in Dickinson will explode that amount to compensate for that difference, but we do anticipate only a partial year of distributions or collections in 2019 because of the timing of the ordinance and the implementation schedule of the tax commissioner. So just to explain that differential there. The proceeds will go 30% to the fire department, 30% to the police department, and then 40% is held back as a reserve for public safety projects. So when there's bigger things that come up, you have an equipment failure, unexpected large costs. It's not a tax on the general fund or a tax on the city. To figure out where that money's going to come from, you'll have those reserves to, to fall back on. So as a comparison to other cities, if we would go up to 7%, Grand Forks, so of course, all these cities have the 5% mandated by the state. So we would be going from 1.5% to 2%. So Grand Forks actually has a 2.25% sales tax, Jamestown has a 2% tax. And then Fargo, Minot, and West Fargo all have 2% tax for their own, and they also have an additional 1/2% tax that's levied by their county. So they actually are at 7.5, so. And then Williston has an extra 1% county tax on top of their 2%. So by comparison, for our, you know, cities in the state that we would consider our peers, 7% would not be out of line. So the estimated impact, assuming 2019 income would be 1.3 million, the allocation would be $500,000, $500,000 to each department. And the reason for that is, for budgeting purposes, we want you to know how much to be able to put towards those. And with the tax income being a little bit uncertain every year, the petition in the organ's language sets a set amount that's guaranteed. So the way the petition is written, the first $1 million, or 60%, whichever is greater. So in the first year, you'll see that, you know, the 1 million is obviously greater than, than the 60%, because it's, we're only anticipating 1.3 million. So, but for budgeting purposes, you know you're going to have that $500,000, so you don't have to try and guess. So that should help with the budgeting process. The surplus funds would go, be allocated by the city commission for public safety special projects, or reserved for future public safety uses. So that would be at your discretion, year to year, what you'd want to do with those funds, in, in terms of special projects. Looking at 2020, if we assume that there's a 2.63 million projected income, the police department would have $791,000 offset of their budget, fire department the same, and then you'd have surplus reserves of just under, or, excuse me, just over a million So why do we need this public safety sales tax? So for one, we have the health and safety of the personnel. We're looking at making sure they have the proper equipment, that it's timely, that they're not using outdated materials, and that they have the equipment they need to go into, you know, a crimes, if it's a police department going into an encounter with a, I guess, I'm going to, you know, city prosecutor, so I say future defendant, but, so, with a, with a criminal, you know, being safe, or with the fire department, they're going into the scene, that they have what they need to, to get there. Additional equipment, you know, as the city continues to enhance, develop, I'm sure you've all heard from the police and fire departments, that they feel a little bit inadequate in being able to respond to some of the outlying areas as quickly as they need. They don't necessarily have all the things that they need. So funding additional equipment would be one of those options. Enhanced trainings, enhanced fire standards of coverage and response time, enhanced volunteer firefighting services and support, which of course, again, when you train those volunteers, it does take some of the pressure off of the full-time firefighters. And then strengthen our response to illegal drugs in our community. I know that you've had presentations from the drug task force, and things aren't getting better in that regard, and so we need to make sure that our police department keeps up with that. And then enhance school safety. You know, of course, that's a huge issue nationwide, ideally getting some school, additional school resource officers in there to, to curtail some of those issues. And then in terms of the surplus, some of the items that have been identified by the, by the departments, those capital expenditures and equipment replacements, you've got radios, air packs, and then unexpected repairs to equipment and apparatus. You know, we all know, we, we hope the fire truck is always working as it should, but sometimes we have those equipment failures that we don't expect. And then the apparatus that the police and fire departments have are expensive, and so trying to replace those spur of the moment without having those, you know, those reserve funds can be taxing on the city. The other concept that was discussed is a, is a training facility. The other concept that was discussed is a, is a training facility. Right now, they don't have a real solid training facility available for either one of them. The fire department consistently has state firefighters coming here to try and train, and we've got some really great opportunities for training here, but they don't have a great space. And so, possibly doing that, so, the surplus uses could be used to design, engineer, and develop that facility. And you'll see on, on this slide here, we've got, we went out, you know, three years, so you could, first of all, read the slide on the projector, but just get an idea.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, we've got the police department, fire department with their projected, their projected general fund subsidies, you know, from the tax. And then, if you look at capital equipment replacements, just based on what Deputy City Administrator Carlson has heard through the budget talks, a good estimate coming from, from those departments. And then, setting aside some dollars in 2020 and 2021 for design of the facility and then, beginning construction. And if we'd extrapolate those out further through 2022 and on, there'd be additional funds going to that training facility that the city could fund with cash from those sales tax proceeds as opposed to another debt. But we'd have the cash to do that on an ongoing basis, so. From the fire department's perspective, they look at things they could do with additional, additional dollars, improve firefighting services, the personnel and engines. They would ideally get a brush truck at Station 2, should just be a one-time purchase, that would be a good use for those surplus capital funds. Funding for emergency medical training, and then, funding, I'm sure you've heard Chief Seavock talk about, sometimes they get there before the ambulance does, and so, they're administering some of those first, first care on scene. So, doing additional training for that. And then, funding for annual fire service based on, based physicals for all the personnel. So, that'd be volunteer and full-time to make sure that they are healthy when they are going into those situations. From the police department's perspective, again, funding for specialized training, so some of those things are, you know, some of the SWAT, the drug task force, and then, again, creation of juvenile services division. So, ideally, what they'd like is an additional school resource officer to get into the elementary schools. I'm sure some of you are hearing that, you know, kids are being exposed to things earlier and earlier and waiting to just have that school resource officer at the high school. Often, some of those problems have occurred two or three years prior. So, being able to get into the elementary schools would be a huge benefit for the police department. And then, putting an investigator in the, in the CIU for specializing in juvenile cases. I'm sure some of you have seen some of the articles about the increase in juvenile cases in the area. There's not really someone here that's specialized to address those cases in a way that comes from more of a, has the psychological background to deal with juveniles as opposed to adult defendants and things like that. So, and juvenile victims as well. So, those are some things that would be helpful from the police department's standpoint. So, who will pay the tax? Everyone that shops in Dickinson, so that's residents and non-residents who rely on public safety while in Dickinson. So, it spreads the burden, as opposed to pulling things from the general fund or relying on a property tax source, it pulls, it spreads the burden over users of the system, right? And so, that's part of why the sales tax is a, is a better option for us. And then, it will be subject to the standard sales tax exemptions. So, you're looking at food and food products for human consumption are exempt from sales tax. Your utilities for electric, water, natural gas, those are exempt from sales tax, gasoline and prescription drugs. So, everything that's currently exempt will remain exempt from this tax. On the next slide, you'll see some of the impact of what does this half-cent, additional half-cent sales tax mean to you? So, I had to run the numbers on these twice because I wasn't sure, I thought I had a typo, but it is .03 cents, so not even a full cent on, on a fast food meal. It would be .15 cents to the cost of a $30 pair of pants, and it would add $2 to the cost of a $400 dishwasher. So, you can see the impact on an individual scale overall would be pretty nominal, but when you spread that over the entire economic base that shops here, it becomes pretty powerful in terms of the total dollars generated. So, if, obviously, I will field questions here this evening, but if anyone has more questions or wants more information or wants to assist in, in getting this passed in November, they can email DickinsonPublicSafetyTax@gmail.com. And then, we will be doing some community presentations at varying times of the day, varying days of the week to try and allow a variety of people to come, discuss the idea, and voice any concerns they have, and really get some, some information out to the public on this, so we have a good educational campaign. Do you have any questions for me?
Right. Any questions for Ms. Kreip? Good job. Any questions? Well, it is also listed as a public hearing tonight, so if there's no questions for Ms. Kreip, I will open up the public hearing before we take into consideration putting the petition on the November ballot. So, if there's anyone from the public wishes to state their concerns, please come forward, state your name on the sale, proposed sales tax increase. Anyone from the public? One from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners or staff, any questions, concerns? Not, I'd look for a motion to, for consideration of putting, putting it on the November ballot or not putting it on the November ballot. We have met the criteria by signatures.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the process of putting it on the November ballot.
Second.
I have a motion to approve putting the petition on the November ballot with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. That is it for the timetable agenda. We will go back, we ended up finishing with public safety a long time ago, and we'll go on to engineering. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, the first item I have is consideration to approve a task order for KLJ, and this is for right-of-way negotiation and acquisition services for State Avenue Water Main Project. This is a project that we had started back in 2016. The design was completed last year with some uncertainty in the funding. The, the design is, is complete but put on the shelf right now. Where we ended up with that project is that it runs through three private landowners' parcels. There's a Fisher Group parcel, a Slinger parcel, and then, a parcel that I believe is currently owned by the estate of the architect. I'm forgetting his name right now. But, so, that, that, there's three parcel owners, 11 parcels that are required to be obtained by the city to have the project move forward. So, this task order, you can see the, the individual tasks that are listed out, would have KLJ go and meet with those owners and acquire the necessary parcels. There's some permanent parcels and some temporary parcels. One thing I would, would add in here, we're anticipating or hoping that no appraisals will be necessary to acquire the property. I do know that the one appraisal, Dennis Halsing's estate, has recently been appraised, so there should be that current information available for that if it's needed. So, with that, I'd open it up for any questions that you might have regarding this task order.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this task order?
This would run down the east side of State Avenue, basically?
It would run on the east side of State Avenue, correct.
And do we just generally use KLJ for projects like this, or?
Historically, President Decker, we have used KLJ for our water projects. Some past projects that we had, when we were using the $44 million of surge funding, KLJ had done some right-of-way acquisition on, on 40th Street, on 21st Street, and on State Avenue. I've also done some right-of-way acquisition on our Museum Drive projects that we did last year, or a couple of years ago when we did the Concrete Road, and on the 8th Street project. This one is a little out of my league as far as right-of-way acquisitions, especially with a property going through probate right now.
I'm just, I guess I'm just curious because, you know, I know it's underneath the, the amount, but it's still $30,000, you know? I mean, do we ever put this out for bids or for, for somebody to do land, you know, right-of-way acquisition for us?
To my knowledge, we haven't done that in the past.
President Decker, too, the, KLJ is the design engineer on this project, the design consultant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Better explains it, yeah. All right, any other questions for Mr. Kubis? Now, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
Move to approve task order?
Second.
I have a motion to approve task order 3415114-2 with a second. Any other questions, further discussion? Now, we'll vote. Mrs. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And we have the other one is removed, so we have a Dickinson Hills update report.
Correct. And I might pass this back to you, Mr. President, but we have had a couple of meetings with, with the Radham Development Team since we last met. We discussed a cost estimate at our last meeting to build Fairway Street, and that was roughly $1 million. Since then, we've had two meetings between staff and the development team. The first one talked about a fine or a fee that was assessed for some stormwater or erosion control infractions. And then, the second meeting I had with them individually was to go over that $1 million cost estimate. I think you've all been handed out a letter that was sent late last week from the development team with a revised proposal to you, or to the city, for a request of $1.9 million roughly. I haven't had, since this letter came out, I haven't had, and I don't believe any staff has had communications with the development team. Again, this was late last week, so.
And this, this letter was sent, I think, just to myself and you, Mr. Kubis?
And, and Ms. Murtha.
And Ms. Murtha, right. And so, the Commissioners have just seen this information for the first time tonight. And I have not responded to Mr. Radham either. But, if you, if you remember the last discussion, it was, if there would be any consideration, it would be consideration of possibly funding $1 million and specially, you know, Special Assessment District. If you read this letter from Mr. Radham, he is not open to Special Assessment District. And he is proposing basically $1.9 million, fully funded by the city, which he says will be repaid over a seven-year period in sales tax. Just to give it a, a quick recap of what is in the letter. Again, in his last paragraph here, he said the, the Special Improvement District would not be something he would be in favor of. I, just, just going through this cost estimate, I mean, there are things on here that he's wanting us to pay for that I, I, I don't think that we would need to, need to pay for even if we would consider this. Hydroseating their property, you know, landscaping with irrigation. Why, why is that even, even in this? You know? So, I guess I would leave it up to you, Commissioners, on, you know, I, I know it's a lot to digest real quickly, but, and, and there's really, is there any precedence that we paid for development?
Mr. President? There is precedence, and I wish we could find those numbers, and I wish Mr. Kubis could find those for us for the next meeting, on what the city's part was in the development of Roar's Edition out there with the water underneath the interstate at that time. Numbers to me that come to mind is 800,000, the city's half was 400,000. I don't know if that's correct because it's been a few years ago. As far as this group, looking for the city to put in 1.9 million for that infrastructure, personally, I feel that the city does have, or should have, some commitment to enhance a business district, to enhance the community and so on. But I also think that the other party needs skin in the game also. I know they aren't interested in any special assessments, which is fine, if they want to come up with the entire 900,000, if we pick up the 1 million, I'm okay with that. But if we're looking at a 50/50 type of deal and they don't want to do special assessments, I think we have handled the ball fairly well on our court. And if, if that's your line of thinking, I think the ball's back in their court, if, if that's what we would want to do. But, you know, personally, again, I, I think City of Dickinson needs to help enhance these areas. We've done it before. We, we do it in every development in town. Somewhere along the line, every business town has had the City of Dickinson kicked in for infrastructure.
I, I would tend to agree, even if you go back to some of the early oil boom from the 80s, I'm sure the city kicked in some dollars back then to develop some of that area, but that's not here nor there. We have to look at right now what we would be willing to, to commit to, and, and I, I just think that they have to be able to accept some specials. We cannot fund this solely without them having some skin in the game, as you said. Commissioners, your feelings?
Mr. Kubis, what was, in your conference call when you mentioned our suggestion for moving forward with the potential special improvement, or special assessments, what was their feedback?
The feedback they had given me was that there were no, of the leases they had signed, all of them forbade special assessments. So, not saying you couldn't do it, but the developer would probably have to assume those costs that the, the leases weren't going to pay specials on property. That, that's what they, they need.
Ultimately, it would fall on developer anyway, the special assessment.
All the leases are triple net, so, everything would pass through, so they would have to exclude them in their lease somehow. I mean, typically, property tax, everything falls to the, to the tenant in a triple net lease.
And triple net, if you're talking about.
Yeah.
I guess ultimately, too, is what, what, what was the conclusion of the penalty? I guess Mrs. Murtha can.
There has not been a conclusion to the penalty.
Okay.
It has been, it has been discussed.
Okay. Thank you. But we, we are working on that. Okay.
I guess, we talk about skin in the game, I guess their presentation to us is, I mean, they've got to build this building, so I would imagine that's some skin in the game.
Uh-huh. That's true.
And it's basically, you know.
I mean, yeah, the improvements they're asking us to do are storm sewer, paving, curb gutter. I mean, yeah, there's a few final line, you know, finished landscaping, which I don't think that we would, irrigation.
You know, if you go through it line, line by line, I, I just don't know why that's even figured in there. You know, that, why is that part of it? I mean, we're going to build a road. That's what basically we have come to the conclusion that we would finance the road.
President Decker, Commissioners, I would also just put a word of caution about in the middle of their cost estimate, cost estimate for I-94 roadway street improvements, while it's a relatively speaking small item, it's about $89,000. We don't necessarily have the authority to just go out and do that even if we gave that financial support. That road's controlled by the DOT, we'd need their, their approval on that. There was much talk about it early on in, you know, in 2014, 2013. But, any, any approval to do that work, whether we pay for it or the developer pays for it, really needs to come from the DOT. really needs to come from the DOT. And I think while there was general consensus that this was going to be approved back in 2014, I wouldn't make that assumption that it's approved today to add these lanes and so on.
President Decker, if I may, you know, that, that area of Dickinson was all of consideration when the city improved their infrastructure, which included the west lift station, upsizing of sewer mains, the west million gallon tank, borings under the, the interstate and the railroad. So there's been millions of dollars of infrastructure built so that there's capacity, water and sewer for that property. So, I mean, there has been, I guess, skin in the game by the city to include that as part of the infrastructure for, for Dickinson.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
Just, just for me, I've, I've gotten a lot of comments, why doesn't the city want this project? And, and that's not the, the case. It's just, once we set a precedent in giving a certain amount of money, we're going to have other requests. And what makes this project any different than the next project or the next project after that, or one that's already been built, you know?
Existing project that wants to improve.
Yeah. I mean, so it's something to tread lightly on.
We have a healthy balance in a special assessment budget, correct?
$4 million, I think.
How much?
$4 million.
$4 million?
Special assessment, I think. Some like that.
It's about 3.9.
3.9 and a special assessment.
Fun, fun.
You know, their, their process here for the payback in, in sales tax, I mean, in roughly six years, they say the cumulative tax total would be approximately 1.6 million. You know, you've got to place a six-year, seven-year payback on it.
They also have a, a collection starting, my guess would be midpoint next year this project is done, from their estimate.
Right, and that's why they're protecting 270 instead of.
Yeah, 270. So they're saying they're up and running by June.
But. So. I guess. It's an interesting process.
Again, to me, you know, Commissioner Frederick's point, it's, the city, you know, or people accusing us of not wanting this to happen is, is wrong. It's, it comes down to how much are we willing to, to spend to have it? And I look at it as, I think if we special assess this amount to, to Mr., you know, Radham and his, Radham Development, and they're allowed to pay it back over a 15-year period, I think that we're putting a lot of skin in the game financing that amount. But, again, there, it, it seems to me they're not open to any specials. If you read the last.
But that's not our fault.
Right. Yeah, so.
I mean, right now, tonight, I would go out and I would say, I would, I would go for the city contributing 1 million special assess, or however they want to bring up that other 9, 900,000, up to there.
So you're saying we offer them 1 million without any repayback?
Yeah, 1 million, that's our part, however they come up the other 900.
I'm more of whatever we contributed to Roar's over there, if Mr. Kubis can find a 400,000 or whatever.
I, I would offer, I got an email for finance, and looking back, and I think 2009, that payment would have happened after 2009, and looking for big, round amounts, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that there are, they don't see any of those amounts in either accounts payable or accounts receivable, because my recollection is, is like Commissioner Steiner's, is that there was an amount paid and amount returned when it found that those infrastructures couldn't serve more than just the Roar's development. So we'll do more searching, but I don't see those are, are, you know, as opposed to finance having.
That was Roar's whole discussion, was once we get the water out there, other people will be tapping into it, therefore the city's going to make our money back on to it. Same way as what they're saying here about taxes coming back to us, basically a wash in six to seven years. I mean, so, you know, if you want to grow the city, there's an opportunity. We're going to have some skin in the game, and, and so are they.
Well, I guess what we need to agree on then, and have some kind of, give, give staff some kind of direction on, so at least Mr. Kubis, so when he starts talking again with Mr. Radham.
One other comment, President Decker and Commissioners, just, you know, on a breakdown of things that I, I think would be, if we were so inclined to grow the City of Dickinson, like Commissioner Steiner said, what they label out there as dry utilities on the top of their estimates, I, I really, that, I can't think of a time where we've, we've said we've paid for power, telecommunications, and gas. Those utilities are, we don't have standards for those utilities. They're typically not put, sometimes they're put in our right ways, but often they're put in utility easements that we have very, very little control over. I, I would feel uncomfortable making any contribution towards those, what I call private utilities.
Well, you know, the only, I, I know Mr. Steiner has said he would be comfortable with a million. The only thing that I, I think I would be comfortable with is $500,000 and the rest of this 1.9 being specially assessed to that property. And that, that would be it. So Commissioners, if you have any other ideas, or you agree with Mr. Steiner, or, you know, we need to give them some direction.
I mean, there, there is other precedent. I, I know, I mean, 18th Street East was put in by the city. I mean, and not charged back to anybody. I mean, I don't know what that road cost, but.
18th Avenue East?
18th Avenue East, yeah. I mean, I know that. I mean, that, they even put in the, the private water and sewer stubs to each lot as part of that project. I mean, so, I mean, it's not unheard of that we've done these projects before.
We got 7 million into the hub road out there. Remember that project? The city's 7 million, we.
We only specialized in water.
We specialized.
Water.
Yeah.
So, I think that was an urban roads project, the 18th Avenue project, but.
18th Avenue was urban roads, and I think most of the large projects after that, if not all of them, were GPT-funded, whether it was through search funding or our, our formula payment that, that we had received. Those weren't special assessed. The one special assessment in that mix was the water and sewer for 40th Street between sewers and the hub.
Because that was something that they couldn't protest out, correct?
Correct. Because it's. Commissioner Walla, Commissioner Trustum, any thoughts?
You know, I, I'm very supportive of growing Dickinson and promoting business in the area, and I, I think it would be wonderful to have these businesses in our community. I am very cautious in providing city funding for a private developer because of the precedent that it creates. And then also, I just don't feel very reassured by a promise from a developer that they're going to be here. I still haven't seen anything except an email and word of mouth. You know, at least with the special assessment, we have, we have some protection there. And so that's why I'm very cautious in providing city funding for a project that just isn't guaranteed.
I mean, obviously, they would have to go vertical before we just go start paving this road, I would assume.
Well, Commissioner Frederick, President Decker, that would be contrary to our requirements of them having infrastructure in place, you know, because during construction, if they're going vertical, we want access for our inspectors, for fire protection, for emergency services. So while from a financial standpoint, that would give us some assurance that the project's moving forward, it's, it's really contrary to what we'd like to see in a development is that we have infrastructure out there to get to their vertical construction. It's a catch 22 in that regard.
I've said from the get-go, I, I'm not opposed to extending Fairway. That's building Fairway. And, and I think Mr. Kubis's estimate before on just building Fairway was more than fair. It was a fair offer. And the developer could absorb a lot of those specials without having to tack them onto this, onto this triple net lease. But, again.
In, in talking about the leases, we, we haven't seen anything. They're showing us projections out six, seven years. I would like to see their leases where they're tied up for six, seven years.
I believe that was the direction that we kind of gave them when they were here, and yet the only thing we've seen from them is their projections in an email that says this project's going to die.
Yeah. I'd like to see the leases.
I just, I feel like we're being backed into a corner and just don't have a whole lot of information to make the most informed decisions.
I would imagine the leases are contingent on.
Pardon?
I would imagine leases are contingent on them going vertical, so.
Mm-hmm.
They probably only have, probably don't even have a signed lease, they probably just have an LOI with a bunch of requirements.
This looks like they want to get into the tail wagging the dog, and we can't get into that. They're coming to us. So we need to sit down and whatever it is, and say, this is what we're willing to do, either yes or no. I, I, you know, I think we're hammering it out here a little bit, whether it's 500,000 or a million or whatever, and they pick up specials, or they come up with the cash, or however they want to do it. We could spell that out and just say, from us, here it is, just like they said, take it or leave it. Well, we don't need it.
And I think we've come to the table and said, hey, we're going to help, but you're going to have to help pay for it in the long run. And so for them to come back and say that's not going to work, I mean, we're doing what we can to, to help them, assist them, get this project off the ground.
And protect ourselves.
Absolutely. Protect the people's money. And I feel like we're doing our due diligence, and they're going to have to meet us halfway.
President Decker, Commissioners, one, one other thing to offer, as we keep discussing, I, I keep thinking of things. We do have a development agreement with, with Five Diamonds was the, the owner of the project. And I believe that development agreement says that they would put this infrastructure in at their expense. There was some city cost sharing of a temporary traffic signal, if I recall, assuming that at the time, again, Mr. Reserve pointed out, this was a, a time of great growth, and, and this was going to be a five-lane business loop very shortly, you know, all that's pulled back dramatically. So the thought being was, when a signal might be required at that intersection, the city would, would pay the cost of a temporary four-way traffic signal.
Those were 300 grand?
Probably not even. For, for temporary wood pole, wire span, lights. So what we're talking about, you know, might be best incorporated into an amended development agreement, because we already have an agreement with them saying, you'll do X, Y, and Z. If we're changing that, I don't want to be in conflict with what it says. But I, I honestly, I haven't read that development agreement in, in quite a while, so.
Well, and our next meeting now is until, yeah, February 4th, the 20, 28th, right?
I mean, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to doing 500,000 and then letting them special up to an additional million or something. Yeah. I wouldn't have an issue with that. I think that puts the city putting, you know, some effort out to get this to happen and giving them another financing option on the remainder. So I wouldn't have an issue with that, but I just don't see how we can pay it all.
I, I don't. We could pay it all, but I'm not willing to.
Or, well, yeah, I guess.
Okay, so it looks like we have a suggestion here to offer $500,000 in funding and then $1 million, the rest of the, what they propose there would be special against their land as an offer to Mr. Radham. So.
Because I think if you go through this one point.
Do we need a resolution for, we don't need a resolution? That's Mr. Kubis, that is our offer to, the next time you speak to him, or if he calls me directly, that will be what I will relay.
So 500,000 and the, the balance to be special?
Special, yes.
Okay. And, and I will ask for the leases, I don't know if he's able to share that, but.
Yeah. Unless, unless there's, is there any Commissioners just opposed to this?
Point of clarification, so 500,000, but the amount to be special, so is the city saying that it will also put for the full 1.9, and the remaining balance of the 1.9 is going to be special?
So it'll, it'll be 1.4 special.
1.4. Well, and the reason I raise it is because there are expenses that you've discussed within that 1.9 that seem not appropriate for city expenditure regardless.
I would leave that to Mr. Kubis.
Yeah, yeah, he could hash that up.
Like the gas and all.
Irrigation systems.
If you just look at Fairway roadway, street improvements.
Yeah, the irrigation system. I know it's, it's small amounts, but they all add up.
And, and there might be a big, if I may, there might be, Mr. Kubis would probably confirm this for me, I believe part of the infrastructure in that 1.9 involves developing the area that is, was the subject of the ongoing fines?
Right. Well, I was just going to say also, that needs to be taken care of. The fine needs to be taken care of. And I know you, you've had pretty productive talks, I think, or semi-productive talks.
The last, the last discussion that we had, Mr. Rendon indicated that because the person who would be paying that fine was not himself, but the individuals whose name is, I believe, actually on the development agreement, that he had to discuss it with him.
Okay. All right. So is that good enough direction for you, Mr. Kubis?
I believe it is.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, staff? All right. Mrs. Carlson's looking at us like, I gotta, I gotta find the money, so. Okay, we'll move on to, you had another report after Dickinson Hills?
I, I did, yes. And I just wanted to give the Commission an update on 40th Street project that we've been in talks with the county on, and this project goes back to early this spring, we had a meeting with the county. We have 40th Street in North Dickinson, from Highway 22 West, two miles over to what was the bypass, 30th Avenue. It's kind of a disjointed road in the sense that the city owns about a quarter of that roadway, and Stark County owns about three-quarters of the remainder of that roadway. So we'd both like to see this developed, paved, not necessarily to city standards with curb and gutter, as it's mostly still a rural area, but to get it paved. Right now, the county's maintaining it, we're developing out towards it and around it in some cases, so both, both sides would like to see it paved. I've drafted up an MOU, it hasn't been distributed yet to anyone, but the county did ask me to come to their meeting just to let them know that, you know, yes, we're still interested in the project, we have it in our CIP budget for 2019. And the, the thought had been that the county would basically lead the project, hire the engineer, bid the project, hire the contractor, and the city would just be a reimbursing entity on it. So just wanted to make you aware of that, that the county's still looking at moving forward with it. Their plan right now, just based on some of the contractor availability, is to hire a contractor to do some culvert installations and some grading in the west mile. The east mile is really pretty close to be, being ready for pavement right now. And then bidding out a paving project over the winter, early spring for 2019 pavement. So if you had any comments on, on the timing of it? And I, I would also add that their, their cost estimate that their engineers put together to date is well within the, the budgeted $1 million that we had put out for the project in 2019, so. I think next step on, on my end would be, you know, to work with Ms. Murtha, finalize an MOA, you know, get that over to their legal counsel, and, and make sure everyone's comfortable with that. It's very similar to a MOA or MOU that we did with the county four years ago, so. So, I don't think there's anything dramatic in there, but, and it gets it on paper for everyone.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the 40th Street? All right, thank you. We'll move on to Public Works. Public Works Directors are off.
Mr. Kubis, did you have something else?
Well, I, I didn't know if you wanted a quick update on 8th Street South, the project that's ongoing.
Oh, okay, that wasn't in there originally, but yeah, if you want to give us a...
Yeah, just a, a quick one-minute update. They've, they've gotten the project paved now, concrete on the west side, asphalt on the east. And tomorrow, the plan is to finally switch the traffic control over. So, traffic will be driving on the new pavement and, and concrete. And they'll be taking out the old asphalt on the south side of the street starting later this week. And I believe, you know, the, the second half of the project will go much quicker. We have encountered a lot of things that we didn't expect, especially soils. But I think we have all those things figured out. So, now it will be a much more productive second half of the project.
I know there were some questions, but I had received some calls that they were gonna get done before the snow flies. And I said, "I'm pretty sure they will."
We always root for it, so...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Mr. Zerth off.
President Decker, Commissioner, thank you. The three things I have for approval are mostly housekeeping with Wink Associates. Wink Associates has been our landfill solid waste consulting engineer for quite a few years. And previously, they've had different agreements. There's different, different tasks we've, we've asked them to do, but they haven't been with what we use as our master task order, or master agreement in the EJ CDC. So, these are just bringing, and especially now, since we've had multiple agreements with Wink, and we're trying to clean things up, and now we have the, the two task orders for 2018. This is, the first one is a master agreement that follows what other consultants do that we have with the city, is the EJ CDC, the E505 addition. So, the first would be a Commission approval to approve the master agreement with Wink Associates, Inc. And I would, staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Directors Zerth off on the master agreement? Now, I'd look for a motion on the master agreement.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Zerth off? Now, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next is the task order under that master agreement. It would be Task Order 2018-1. This task, I guess, was approved, the agreement was approved May 15, 2018, but this puts it in the task order under the EJ CDC, and incorporates the approved proposal in these documents. And the 2018, oh, that city project is for General Landfill Services for 2018. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mrs. Zerth off on the task order with Wink?
39,500?
Yes, yep, 39,500. And that's broke down, just give me a second here.
It's broken down, yeah.
Is, and report for that is 11,200. Quarterly monitoring reports are 6,600. Annual survey, which is required by the state, 3,700. And then it does have 18,000 for additional assistance if needed for tasks throughout the year that are usually required. That gives you your total of 39,500.
I'm, I'm always hesitant in contracts and so on, and task orders, when they got other miscellaneous, and it's a mountain like 18,000, which is more than any other item on the report. If they can break those out somehow, let us know what makes up the 18,000. I would go along with agreeing to approve this here tonight, if you can also get the 18,000.
Yeah, I guess, you know, this was approved in May, so the agreement is approved, it's just putting it under the task order. But I can sure get you those numbers and what we historically have done under the miscellaneous. So, I can get you that.
I, I just think back to my old accounting days in college, and anytime I saw miscellaneous, they, you should question it.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Zerth off? Now, I'd look for a motion on the task order 2018-1.
So, move? To approve?
Thank you, Commissioner. The next...
Well, I gotta get a vote here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got ahead of myself.
Yeah. Any other questions? We have a motion to approve with a second. Any questions, comments? Not? We'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved. Task Order 2018-2.
Thank you. Yes, this task order is for the Title V permit for this new source performance standards. If, I guess I can explain that a little, little bit. If the, if a landfill has the solid, or the capacity of over 2.5 million cubic meters, it is considered to be under the new source performance standard by EPA. And so, then we need to obtain the Title V permit. And these are provisions under the Federal Clean Water Act, or, excuse me, the Clean Air Act. And so, we need to look at that, how that pertains to the federal EPA Clean Air Act. And Wink Associates will go through that permit application. Their cost is 15,000. This was also approved the May 15, 2018 Commission meeting, but this incorporates it into this task order that will help us with the other task order and the master agreement. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Mr. Zerth off? If there are none, look for a motion on this task order.
So, move?
Second?
We have a motion to approve with a second. Yeah, we have a second.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Any further questions? Not, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. We'll keep moving through Public Works. We have a report coming from Solid Waste Manager Prowse.
Good evening, Mr. Decker and Commissioners. Quick update tonight on our recycling. I haven't talked to you guys in a while, so I thought I'd give you an update. Tomorrow, an RFP goes out for recycling transport of our recycled materials to our material recoveries facility in Minneapolis. That RFP will close August 29th, and then we'll be looking for a approval at the next 1st September Commission meeting. The recycling carts are currently in our production stage right now. They're planned to be delivered on September 4th, and we will be delivering those to the area, single-family residential places, September 4th through the 28th. Along with that, once those carts are delivered, we're gonna install our FleetMind GPS AVL system. They need the information from the cart delivery in order to incorporate it into a system. It's in, in regards to reading the RFID chips and everything on the containers. So, the two are kind of tied together, but that's all slated to take place in the month of September. The compactor, trailer, and conveyor that was approved for compacting the materials and getting them prepped to haul to Minneapolis is still on schedule for a September delivery and setup. They are actually are planning to start doing some remodeling to the Baylor Building to accommodate those mater, or those piece of equipment in the mid to late August era. Burgers planning to start on August 13th, and then the rest are to follow thereafter. There is a recycling kickoff plan, event planned, September 29th, and that's in conjunction with the Dickinson Public Library, trying to get the recycling program out there. I believe there's a poster contest, a first family award. Miss Trustum, I believe, is working on some of that, or involved in some of that as well, or has provided input, I thought?
I, this is the first I'm hearing of this.
Oh, okay. I thought you were part of it.
But I would love to help, sure.
You've just been ballin' toe.
I'll have Coordinator Shoemaker reach out, too.
I'll be gone for the kickoff, though.
Okay. So, September 29th, we are planning a kickoff event. And then, as it sits right now, we are still slated to start recycling, single-family, or single-stream recycling, starting October 1st. With all that being in place, and in addition to the original plan, is the recycling coordinators trying to reach out to schools to get into the kids' heads to take it home to their families for recycling. The schools are now asking for a recycling program in their school. So, her new task is working with the schools to set up that program. However, at the next couple meetings, we're gonna have to go through a first reading and a public hearing on a commercial recycling fee, as we currently do not have anything in our fee structure. I'm working with Deputy Carlson right now on putting that together for you guys, and then we'll be presenting it at our next meeting. As of right now, we're looking at utilizing the 300-gallon containers that we're currently pulling out of the alleys and switching out for 96-gallon individual carts, as are recycling containers for commercial businesses.
Are you in a special color?
They are black, but we, we'll have to order in special lids. We'll put some stamping on them, and what's acceptable, not acceptable. But we'll put the lids on as blue, so...
Okay, I was gonna say, because if, if you leave them black, you're gonna get...
Correct.
You're gonna get a mess.
Yep, no, so I do have some blue lids. I'm working with a manufacturer right now, and we're trying to put that all together. Again, we're discussing rates. We're trying to decide a setup and a number that we need to go with. In addition to that, we're looking at moving into the apartments. So, once the single-family is up, the duplexes are up, and the schools are running on the recycling side, the next step then would be to look at the apartment complexes, which was one of the wishes from you guys several meetings back. Again, we'll utilize that same fee structure for those and utilize those 300-gallon carts that are coming out of, or containers that are coming out of the alleys. With all of that, in the early beginning stages of January, or somewhere thereabouts, we're planning to meet up with the area businesses to determine what their recycling needs are and come up with a structure for them. So, over the next few months, you will see me with some different fees and some changes that we're looking at for, or additions that we're looking at for a recycling program. As we're adding the apartments, the commercial businesses into our structure, keep in mind, we are gonna probably end up adding staff as we're creating a completely new route to our system. So, that's above and beyond anything of what we are currently doing at this point. My unfortunate news I have for tonight, I just found out today, we are not going to receive the USDA grant that was for $100,000. So, that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Prowse?
Mr. Prowse, I have a couple. Did anything ever come to our discussion in regards to a potential dumpster for tree branches to kind of help with the abuse?
We have discussed that internally. We did try a couple solar-powered cameras at our locations. Unfortunately, they were unable to do what we needed them to do for reinforcement purposes, so they got taken down and sent back to the distributor where they were fully reimbursed. Currently working with our IT department. We're going to be doing a trial run, hopefully in a couple weeks, on one of our sites. We did find some new cameras. They're actually getting hardwired in, and we're working on some technology to put them together to work. If everything goes well, we'll utilize those same cameras at all sites. And then, because we're so late into the year already, I'm thinking we'll probably consider tree boxes next year, if everything works well on our end. We have to have means of monitoring, or it's just gonna continue to get worse.
Thank you. And how has the transition been going from alley dumpsters to individual things?
It's been interesting. We are near completion. We should have about one week. The guys have been working it in after the routes, and then actually have been having them work some overtime on Wednesdays to get those cans out. They currently have the area from 5th, 5th Avenue West to State's Avenue left. There's a couple long alleys in there, and then there's just a, a few three-block alleys. So, the transition is happening. It's nearing completion. And all the drivers, we've already restructured our route. That seems to be working really well. I think all in all, it's gonna be good.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to planning. We have a final plat for Lupo subdivision, Planning Director Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is a seven-acre site in the ETZ, just outside of the city limits. It was heard at our last Planning Commission meeting. There was no opposition or concerns voiced from the neighbors. The application was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and staff would recommend approval of this resolution as well.
Any questions for Mr. Hadley or Mr. Aaron? I know Aaron's first name, so...
Johansson?
Johansson. He's been sitting here very patiently the whole evening, listening to everything on FLP-006-18.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve FLP-006-18 with a second. Any other questions or comments? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You can go now.
Mr. Steiner, take care of the bureau.
That's cruel. That's cruel.
It was. All right, Mr. Hadley, we have a rezoning petition.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Brown subdivision, there's a zoning petition from agricultural to limited industrial on a 1.5-acre site. That site is located in, as part of the Brown subdivision. As you'll see later on in the motion, this is the first reading of this zone change. There wasn't any opposition to this particular request either, and during the second reading, the corresponding resolution will be included to address the subdivision plat. So, it's a little, little confusing, I guess, but this, this would be the first reading of this zone change of, from agricultural to limited industrial, which does meet our future land use map criteria.
And this is 1659?
It is. And I believe, yes, and, Mr. President, members of the Commission, just for your reference, because it is a, because the zone change is coming before the, the plat, the, there's a little confusion on the legal description. So, it currently reads Lot 1, Block 1 of Brown's second subdivision. It actually, at this point in time, is the west 160 feet of Lot 1, Block 1 of Brown's subdivision. When the subdivision goes into effect, it will actually be a part of Brown's second subdivision. So, we're going to modify the legal description when it comes before you again.
And with this first reading, I don't see it listed as a public hearing, but we can open it up for the public. If anyone from the public would like to come up with any concerns about this rezoning, please come forward. One from the public will close the public hearing. Any questions for staff on this rezoning petition?
Mr. President, just one comment. I did have an adjacent property owner contact me, and Mr. Hadley is aware of that, with regards to what they were required to do when they rezoned their property, because it was next to a residential house. And are we gonna require the same thing in this property?
If I could address that, in the, in the zone change request, we can't put conditions on the zone change. So, it wasn't put on them, probably is on the zone change, it was probably done at the plat level. And I think the, the reason they had requirements as such was it was a pretty large facility. This is a pretty small, single garage operation. We surely could require them to put some, some landscaping screening in.
I think it was screening, yeah, it was screening that we...
It would be minimal.
It's Wyoming case.
In comparison, it would be very minimal. But we, we would put that condition on the plat.
Any other questions for Mr. Hadley or staff? Now, I'd look for a motion on Ordinance 1659.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any other questions? Comments? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have nothing from building and code. And we will move on now to public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to come forward with a issue concerning the city, please come forward and state your name.
Yes, my name is Marvin Dill. I'm worked, I am CEO of Chemistry Services and... I'm work, I am CEO of Chemistry Services and Silverbus. And in 2016, you adopted an ordinance on the taxis, omnibuses, and shuttles. And it says in there that we are to have a city license and have the city license displayed five places on the vehicles, and Silverbus has complied. The buses like Public Transit, Two's Construction, Prairie Rose, which is owned by SW Fencing, Rock, Night Ride Transportation, and Rockstar, and there's another new one with no name on it all, are all running without the city license being displayed. I have talked to the officers, I've talked to Rita at the City Commission, and it's been two years, eight months, and nothing has come about it yet. They are still running without the placards on the buses or on the taxis. There's taxis, like Dakota Taxi doesn't have their placards on. US Taxi doesn't have his placards on. Bala Taxi, which doesn't have anything on it, and I don't even know if it's registered with the city. But I, every time I raise a complaint with the police department, I called it in here three weeks ago, there was Public Transit, Silver, I mean, Public Transit, this other new one that I don't know what, who it is, license number on the, is 088CDD on the plate. And it was Two's Construction also was running shuttles between the Ramada and the Esquire, and it was a courtesy because they had the bikers, women bikers there, but they were all being paid by the Ramada to do this. And it states in the ordinance, if we're being paid or receiving compensation for our services, we are to be licensed and go through all the criteria that is in the ordinance. And they are not. And I talked to the police officer, and the police officer told me, they're licensed, I mean, they're legal. I said, how are they legal? Well, they're doing a courtesy shuttle. They've been hired by the Ramada. That means that they all are supposed to have this license.
Mr. Dill, do you know if any of these, like taxis are operating, like Lyft, as Lyft drivers? Do you know that?
No, they are not.
Okay.
Lyft drivers, I know they are what they call a transportation network company, and they have, the way they work, the way I understand is that you dispatch via app and you charge via credit card. But if you got a phone number and you take cash, then you can be considered a taxi.
And you've contacted Mrs. Murtha about this concern, and I know she.
Well, I talked to her, I tried to talk to her Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and her assistant called me yesterday and talked to her about it.
Okay.
But I've talked to the police department, I've talked to, like I say, Rita, and it just, they're legal, or we'll check into it, and nothing has ever come of this.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we'll be sure that appropriate staff is looking into your concern.
But it's not only the buses, it's the taxcabs, too.
If we're going to have an ordinance, it needs to be enforced.
And also, there are taxis, are there are other vehicles running in town. I noticed, as I do my runs, with the cardboard on the window saying, "Transportation Service", and that's all.
Mr. President, I think we should make a direct, direct the police, Chief of Police to make the direct report to us regarding this situation. Whether he gets it from his officers to bring the information in, whatever, I think we'd like to have him tell us what has happened.
Do we have an ordinance on limousines? Because I'm assuming these.
Well, those, wouldn't they be considered in on shuttle part of it, too?
Well, that's what my question is.
I don't know if we have limousines. I know we have the shuttle buses.
Yeah, Porter. They're going to make the argument that the shuttle, the Rockstar bus, or whatever bus is a limousine. That'd be my guess is the argument.
So, Mrs. Carlson, you can direct Chief Dossinger. We'll get a report, so we'll have it by our next meeting, and we'll get the, we'll get staff on it, Mr. Dill.
Well, I appreciate it, because like I say, you know, when we follow the ordinance and they don't, it costs us tens of thousands of dollars more.
I agree. If we have an ordinance on the books, it needs to be adhered to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? You have any issues of city concern, not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name. Anyone from the public? Not, we'll close the public issues section. Commissioners, anything from commission? Any concerns? Anything that you want to, you know, let the public know about? Nothing from commission, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. We adjourn.